There you go.
There we go. And we're live.
That's because we weren't live yet. We're gonna call this meeting to order October seventeenth of two thousand and nineteen. Cinda, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Spread?
Present.
Harvey?
Present.
Brockert?
Present by phone.
Sosado?
Present.
Brackett?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Malcolm?
Present.
Seven present, zero absent.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reason
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Phone delay.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're gonna start the evening off with some oath of office for two firefighters. Will Tyler Wilshire and Joe Reimers please meet me up? If you will, gotta get this over here so the folks at home can hear. Get about right there. Speak loudly. Face me and raise your right hand. I, Tyler Wilshire...
I, Tyler Wilshire.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions...
That I'll support the constitutions.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa...
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties...
Discharge all the duties.
...of firefighter...
Of firefighter.
...in the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter...
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. Thank you. Please sign here. And after we swear in, Joe, we'll go around front. Come on up, Joe.
Alrighty.
You know the drill then, right?
I know it.
Alright, raise your right hand. I, Joe Reimers...
I, Joe Reimers.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the constitutions...
That I will support the constitutions.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
State of Iowa...
And the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially...
And I will faithfully and impartially...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties of firefighter...
Discharge all the duties of firefighter.
...in the state, in the city of Muscatine, Iowa...
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now or hereafter...
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign here. And then Tyler, if you will start and give the council an opportunity to welcome you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations to the families as well. We welcome you and appreciate you being on staff here. Head on back and celebrate. We're gonna go ahead and continue on with tonight's agenda. Next, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here tonight who would like to speak to council about something that's not on tonight's agenda. Looks like we have one right here. Roger, I think you know the drill, but please state your name and address for the record.
Roger Roth, Clark House. For many years, since Gary Coderoni has been here, we have had revenue generation. It's used in the corporation in relation to the corporations getting just compensation. But when you use it in government, it's considered embezzlement. The police department, since the days of Coderoni, were using revenue generation on tickets. The evidence, when I hear a monthly quota tickets by the police department, are penalty against the officer that does not make quota. When delivering newspapers years ago, I saw a parking meter officer stand near a car and every few seconds give it a ticket due to the meter being expired. I stopped it by putting coins in the affected meter. Discovery shows that penalties the officer that does not gain the quota will be by the following examples: a lower evaluation, minimum standard rating, loss of shift choice. Here, the words "performance standard" and "performance expectation" are political terminology to define the need for a needed quota ticket situation. When councilmember Mr. Fitzgerald recently praised considering the money from the courts in our coffers also may suspect the police engendered revenue generation tactics to gain some money. Recently, SCOTUS, that is the U.S. Supreme Court, states that it's illegal under the Eighth Article of Amendment, and all governments fall under this legal interpretation. This can also be okay from the courts under admiralty due process, but that too has been dealt with. The magistrate courts and higher courts use the very same process that Mayor Brodesson went through some years ago, admiralty law. Such courts do not have to apply constitutional law, but can consider the defendant as guilty, needing to prove their innocence. This is also where the state unknowingly gains to alleged coffers' gain. When I was a witness in one of these courts, the following happened. The defendant nor their witness cannot be in the courtroom until the plaintiff's side were done with the paperwork. You don't see that in the higher courts. Would not allow the defense to show evidence in this situation is the same the person had before under the same reasons without even looking at it. Also attached with prejudice to defy, to deny defense any appeal to a higher court under their right under redress of grievances is a source of revenue generation under military fringe that has the appeal under admiralty court in the first place. And that's where the city has an anomaly here, because they're already guilty anyway. And there goes your money to the city. The city, for the police department to gain money for their activities always comes from the city's general funds to keep it out of revenue generation. And number two, since the city council also years ago said yes to the LGBTQs, whatever they are, also comes under your jurisdiction. We are finding that a violation of the Seventh Article Amendment to the United States Constitution, that are the laws of nature's God, Article One, Section Three in the Iowa Constitution, by presidential candidates add LGBTQ marriages at churches that don't comply. Noncompliance will cause such churches to have their nonprofit stats revoked on all of their property. Since it's an election time, God has a common solution. "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sins and will heal their land." First Chronicles seven fourteen from the text receivable, King James of sixteen eleven. The reason we found out last presidential election, the news media found out some of these people mentioned here were near the election's end, got down on their knees and asked God for help to get Bush in. He got in. And yet, we hear the former presidential candidate saying, "We're gonna beat him again." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else here who would like to address council? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Dustin Ballard, seven fifteen Lake Park Boulevard. I'd like to say thanks again, council, for hearing us out last week. And I just wanted to... We listened back to the council this week during work, kinda, and there were some questions, I think, that didn't get answered. So I did a bit of research. I know Tom, Councilman Tom Spread, had to ask why we didn't have insurance. We pulled the FEMA map and actually had the FEMA who sets the floodplains in Iowa. Yeah, we're not in a floodplain. The last ten percent of our yard is in a floodplain, but there's no dwelling, so that's why we don't have to have it. So that was one of the things I looked at. I also checked with a previous owner, who by the name is Kathy Hill, used to own our property before we bought it. That's who we bought it from. She had lived there for approximately five to six years. She had absolutely no flooding whatsoever from the water coming up from the storm drains. I asked about the creek, the Matt Creek, and she said no. The last time that that flooded was in nineteen ninety-three. And they have never had any flooding from that whatsoever. And I don't know, maybe someone can answer this question? Was there something done with the creek after nineteen ninety-three to keep it from going out of its banks? Because it's weird that we've had all this rain, right? And that's the one thing that has not flooded on our street is the creek. It's been the storm drains that come up to our driveway and into our garages, because we have split four houses. So that was a question that I had for the council. I didn't know if that was something we had done different.
I don't believe there's been anything, though.
No. So I also did a little bit of investigation. I went around and contacted some members, or people that lived on Amy Drive, Howser Street, the two known streets, the other Muscatine that are known to flood. Just discussed with them, found some residents who had gone through the two thousand, what was it, two thousand, I wanna say two thousand twelve, thirteen, whatever flood that we went through, plus the last years. And on both streets, they only received water in their basement back five years ago during the July Fourth weekend flood. This past one that we just had, which was a year ago from Labor Day, there was no water in their basement. Now, the street did flood, but they said it was only a couple inches. It wasn't like, like ours was approximately five to six foot. So, and that was another thing that I wanted to bring, I think we didn't stress enough to everyone in City Works and the council that it's so much of a hazard that street is once we get that much rain. I mean, my wife brought it to our, my attention after we left. She goes, "You should've mentioned about the four cars that were not, that were once to be seen before the rain, you know, once they got flooded and they died out in the street. And then by the time the rain ended, you couldn't see those cars anymore." So you're talking, what's the average car height, five foot? Right around there? So that's five foot of water where we live at the deepest point.
We're not talking a couple inches.
We're not talking inches. So we went home and measured, because we still, believe it or not, we have water stains on our wainscoting in our basement, because we have, do have a finished basement, because we haven't replaced it yet, because, like I said, we're not gonna replace it until the issue's fixed. We measured that. We had approximately seventeen inches of water in our basement on the last flood. If that puts any perspective for you. Seventeen inches of water in a basement? I'm telling you, it's crazy. I mean, there's nothing you can do. You just watch it come in, and as soon as the water, the rain recedes or stops, you watch it go back out. And then you get friends come over at two o'clock in the morning to help you clean it up. So my biggest thing is, I don't, what are we gonna do as a city? Is it gonna take someone drowning in a car on that street before we say, "Yeah, it needs to be fixed"? Is a hundred thousand dollar fix worth a human's life? I mean, is that what we're putting a price tag on? I mean, that's, that's the way I'm looking. Because as much as the police department and the fire department don't want to hear this, if it wasn't for my wife and I in the last flood, you would've had a death, because we saved a young teenager's life. And it sounds weird, right? How does that happen in the middle of town? But it does. And the other point is, is you, someone else mentioned, well, you bought your house. You're absolutely right. I did buy my house, and I bought it next to a creek. And I would one hundred percent accept the responsibility of that creek flooding and coming into my house, because I bought that house knowing that the creek was behind my house. However, I can't accept the fact that rainwater is causing seventeen inches of rain, or seventeen inches of water in my basement on the downpour. And it just, it infuriates me that when we're worried about spending money and solving the problem the cheapest way we can, when, if we just spend a lot more money and resolve the issue, then we can move on from it, and it's over with, right? Instead of spending a hundred thousand now, and then it doesn't solve the issue, and then you gotta go back and spend another three hundred thousand, I mean, it's just, it doesn't make sense to do that. Why not just spend the money now and fix it and be done with it? Like I said, is it gonna take someone to drown in their car on that road before you guys decide to fix the road and the drainage problem? Because that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to council? Hearing nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on. Is there, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items six A and B, items eight A through C, items twelve A and B, and tonight's bills totaling two million eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-two cents?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Sosado, with a second by Councilman Spread. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. We're gonna move on down now to eleven A. We have presented for city council's consideration the third and final reading of an ordinance vacating the right-of-way for Briar Street and portions of the adjoining alley. Briar Street no longer serves an interest to anyone beyond the adjoining property owners. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Sosado. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Sosado?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted with all ayes. So we have six more resolutions that all follow from that ordinance. The first one is a resolution conveying the vacated right-of-way to Muscatine Used Parts. Do I have a motion to approve and adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Sosado, with a second by Councilman Brackett. Any discussion? Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
And Councilman Sosado?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted with all ayes. Eleven C, then. We have, this resolution conveys the vacated right-of-way to Chamberlain Heating and Air Conditioning. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread, second by Councilman Sosado. Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Sosado?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Eleven D, this resolution conveys the vacated right-of-way to Millwork Properties. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Was it Spread, or was it you, Councilman Harvey? Councilman Harvey, with a second by Councilman Brackett. Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Sosado?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Eleven E, then. This one resolution conveys the vacated right-of-way to Thomas McClary Senior and Thomas McClary Junior. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman, I think Oz, was the first, Councilman Brackett? With this, I was, with the second by Councilman Osmond, I meant between him and Spread for second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Sosado?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted with all ayes. The next resolution conveys the vacated right-of-way to Gridco. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Harvey. Any discussion? Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Sosado?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted with all ayes. The next resolution conveys the vacated right-of-way to Tracy Horton. Do I have a resolution? Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
A second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett, with a second by Councilman Malcolm. Any discussion here? Hearing none, Councilman Sosado, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
This resolution is adopted also. Eleven H, we have presented for city council's consideration the third and final reading of an ordinance vacating the right-of-way located on Lake Park Boulevard and Hancock Street to the adjacent nine twenty-two Hancock Street. The adjoining landowners plan to purchase the property from the city to use for their business. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance and direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread, with a second by Councilman Sosado. Any discussion?
I would just like to make a statement that I hope that they, you know, proceed with being good neighbors in that, in that area with their employee parking, so that we don't end up having to revisit this topic at a future date, because I think that the potential for being a nuisance neighbor is, is high in this case, but I look forward to the continued growth and success of their business as well, because I think it provides a good service to the community. So I just would encourage that, and so that we don't have to have that discussion in the future.
I have one question for Andrew to clarify from what we had discussed last week. The, the purpose around the retention pond you had mentioned was because the, the property was set lower than the street? Okay. Because that, I went drove by there, that property sits up about two feet from the street, two or three feet. So I didn't understand how we wouldn't drain that into Izet versus draining it back down that dry creek in the back.
Okay, I heard a couple questions in there. So you wanna know about the detention basin and why it's there?
Why are we draining that to the retention pond versus draining the rainwater coming off, let's say, the roof of the home or the new, the new property down Izet to a sewer and drain system versus draining it to a non-controlled system that potentially is going back to a creek, has nowhere to drain, but probably a road through the properties down there?
One of those general rules that you always want to follow is if a property drains a certain way, that should be the way that it always drains. Now, if you have a piece of property that's here and it drains this way, and this piece of property develops into a big building, all of a sudden now you have an increase in runoff that comes off of that. These people down here shouldn't have to receive that increase in runoff. So you build a detention basin that captures and holds on to that difference between the two. So that's why it still drains the way it has always drained, and that's why we had the detention basin put in there. So it's, it's kinda related together.
Yeah, but I mean, that would be true if we were gonna say that we were building an area that where that groundwater would be able to go back into the ground, but technically we're building a roof that has, I don't know how many thousand square feet, that now is gonna go into a pond that's now gonna drain down a creek that normally wouldn't have that amount of water. That's what my, my question, so now it's not gonna be treated, it's basically gonna, we're not gonna go back into our sewer water separation program, it's gonna go into somebody else's yard.
And where it has always gone.
Well, not that amount of water. It would normally, if you had grass, it would probably go into the ground through there. But my, my comment was just initially from what was said last time, that the reasoning was because it's set lower, and that's not the case.
No, that is, that is not the case. I kinda cringed when that got said the other night, too.
Okay. I wanna just clarify on that, but I, I'm just concerned, as we start doing this, if we want to look at that after six months, a year, if we're gonna see erosion at the bottom of those properties, because technically, that's not city-laid.
Right, exactly. It, it is not.
Okay. So just as a follow-up action item, after six months, maybe a year, how is that, how does that look? How's that dry creek look? Or do we need to bu, build it up or do anything like that? That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a question, too.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was wondering if I remember right, the parking on the west side, they said they'd probably make that a hard surface within two years, and the property on the south side within five years. And I was just wondering, do we have a mechanism in place or something in hard riding that will ensure that that actually happens?
Mayor, council, that'll be a part of the approved site plan, so there's two, there's two mechanisms, mechanisms by which we can enforce the site plan. One is, one is pulling, one is, it's tied to the certificate of occupancy. The other, as, as with anything else, it would, if you chose to ignore and didn't fix it on correction, it would be a municipal infraction that you could then take to court for, for a civil cite, civil citation and a judge's order to remedy it.
I'm only asking that because, you know, we've had some issues with non-hard surface parking areas, so I just wanted to be sure that it would be addressed in some fashion for this one.
There isn't, I, yeah, word to come to that, there is enforcement mechanisms.
We don't require like a performance bond or anything like that to ensure that it gets, does get put in?
No, that, that's not the mechanism we use.
Thank you, Andrew. Hearing nothing else, count? Please come up. State your name and address for council.
My name's Ken LaRue. My wife Dana and I own non-emergency transport. The address is nine twenty-two Hancock, and our personal address is forty-five Colony Drive. I would just like to state for the record that at no time has our business been a nuisance to that area. We've been in good conversation and friends with everybody in that neighborhood and discussions, well, I shouldn't say discussions, but communication with them. No one has any complaints except for one individual, and I understand their concerns. Absolutely, I do. We've tried to talk to them and, and make things reasonable as far as parking and being considerate of their personal parking spaces. By the time the wife gets home, that spot is available ninety-nine percent of the time for them to park and for their one son to park out front. and for their one son to park out front. And I remember in the past saying trash was an issue. You look at our property and there is no trash on our property. If you go down the street a little further, not pointing any fingers, I think you'll see where maybe that blows from. But we have tried our best, our employees are polite to anybody who speaks to them and some do not even speak to us. We've done everything we could to be a concerned and considerate neighbor and will consider, or continue to do that in the future. The fact that we're putting this building up, I think states the fact we're trying to alleviate that situation. So we're doing everything we can, we've done everything we can and will continue to do so in the future.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue, we appreciate that.
Mr. LaRue, could I ask him a question?
Sure.
Just, I, I had, I, I've, I've seen the plans, but can you tell me how many vehicles the building will hold?
It should hold all twenty-six of the vehicles we currently, we have. The only other, the only other thing, I don't expect that employees will pull into the garage, take a spot and a vehicle out with them. On average, we have fifteen to twenty drivers a day. So if it becomes a concern, we will, we've talked about with Andrew maybe putting out some parking along the, the, uh, south side of the building with the drain thing in consideration, part of the vacation process, leave some area over there and, and we'll do everything we can to make things right for that area. And I do appreciate your comment that it's a great service to our community, cause I do believe that it is.
It is.
And, and I would just, I, I appreciate the, uh, what, your statement there and that's, hopefully that's, you know, it goes that way and hopefully uh, it, it works out because like I said, I, I think it's a good, you know, a good option for you and, and if you're planning on adding parking, you know, behind the building as you grow, or if you have parking issues on the, the, the current plan, then, then that's perfect. That's exactly what I was hoping to hear, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming down tonight. Hearing nothing else, Councilman Malcolm, oh, sorry, yes, please.
My name is John Perrin, I live at nine eleven Hancock Street, right across the street from non-emergency transport, which the, uh, site plan that's gonna be coming up and the, uh, vacation of the right of way, what we're here tonight about. There, there's been, listening to Mr. LaRue, you know, I agree with a lot of what he has to say. Um, there are some things though, as far as being, you know, a good neighbor and doing all that they can do. I mean, no, come on. They, they've taken, they have a huge lot on their property that they could've chosen to pull into and instead they took property, uh, right of way and used it, the city's property, without paying a fee. Gravelled it, continued on using their business, building their fleet, okay? All, all along, they were taking their personal employee vehicles and congesting the residential side of the street, okay? That, that's a problem, that's not doing all that you can do when you have, I don't know how many thousands of square feet are over there in that grass lot. I mean, you've all seen it, you know what I'm talking about. It's, I, I've, I've been told that it's a public street and I can park on that side of the street if I want to, well, come on. Am I really gonna go over there and try to park in their parking lot? To walk over to my own house or have my family park over there? It, it's just not a realistic situation, it's, it's really not. I think, I think this site plan and the building, you know, I, I think it's light years ahead of what may or may not have ever happened over there. You know, I, I commend them on the fact that they're building their business, I do, I really do. But I mean, I still don't feel like I have any reassurances or assurances that, hey, once they build this, once, you know, it's landscaped and all that, that they're still not gonna park employee parking, they're still not gonna park vehicles. Uh, customers are gonna park, you know, in front and congest Hancock Street. Uh, this is a residential side of the street that I live on, that's a business. Isn't there something that can be done? I mean, it's, it's just one of those things. Uh, I have no curb, my yard gets rutted up, and yes, there is, there is trash, there, there's stuff. I mean, I've had barbecue sauces, uh, ranch sauces.
Please, please direct your comments to Council.
Set on, uh, set on my kid's, uh, uh, side mirror on his car that clearly wasn't there when he parked there. I mean, these are just little, little, you know, problems that just, they build up, they build up and they build up. Uh, I mean, if you look at the situation and you say, hey, uh, you have somebody saying that they actually are doing all that they can do, well, I don't believe that. Not for one second. Uh, yes, they have cleared parking, you know, uh, it has gotten a lot better since this proceeding has been going on. You know, I fear that once it's over, it'll probably just go right back to it without some assurance from the city that, hey, this is, this is the boundary, you know? Hey, I know what it's like to go make a dollar, I know what it takes to do it. But negligence of the residents, I mean, there's owned S2, correct? That is not supposed to interfere with the residential neighborhood and the flow of traffic.
Can, can I respond?
Thank you.
I mean, you got, you, you.
Yeah, we've got a couple Council that, that would like to respond, we understand your position.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Um, basically what, what I would ask, you know, looking at the situation, we have, you know, whatever, whatever history you had there before, you know, and whatever, you know, and it sounds like maybe you've had some conversation or lack of conversation in the past. You know, it does, you know, they are building this building and, and putting parking in and he stated, the, the business owner has stated that they will look at putting parking behind it and, and I would hope that that, you know, if, if it's necessary, that's accurate. And I would hope the business owner would take, you know, the residents' concerns into consideration as well and, and he seemed to state that he did. And so the growth, you know, the building, this building is going to alleviate, you know, some of the issue. I can't guarantee you obviously that you're not gonna have people parking in front of your house, but I would welcome you back to talk to us if that, if that, you know, becomes an issue. And so what I would hope is that you can, you know, kinda set things, the past aside, move forward and have a better relationship with the business on one side, your house on the other and, and hopefully things will work out and then you can say, well, you know, yep, they had some growing pains and they made it right by putting the building and the parking in and, and then you move forward and then that way, you, you know, you and your home and they and their business don't have a, a conflict, you know? So I, I would love to see that and I'd love to see, you know, hopefully both sides can take that into consideration so we don't have to address the issue in the future and we can just move forward and you can be happy in your home and they can have a successful business. And so that, that's what I would ask, it'd be that we can move forward and, and see what happens and hopefully we don't have to come back and talk about it again, but you know, if your, if, if your use of, you know, your property is, is hindered by, or your property's damaged or things like that, then I would, you know, encourage you to take pictures, file report, that type of thing. But hopefully we don't have that kinda situation and we can all get along.
Right.
Do you have?
No, go ahead, go ahead. Comment on what Councilman Brackett said?
Sure.
Uh, basically, I'm gonna go back to a question that Councilmember Harvey said and it kinda asking Andrew Fangman and, and initial, you know, and then eventually, uh, Jim Edgeman came up and clarified that on the parking, on the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there a mechanism, you know, in place that assures? I mean, you yourself here as a Council want assurances, okay?
Mm-hmm.
As do I, a taxpaying citizen, you know, right across the street from a business that, I mean, has done wonderful, that's great, that's great. But you take all the things in, into consideration as far as, you know, vehicles warming up, headlights and, you know, to rutting up my yard, track, I mean, everything, you take it all into consideration, okay? And then still being told that it's not them parking there, it's their employees parking. Where's my reassurance? I, I, I need something.
I think part of the issue too is that it is a city street and so people can park there, you know, we have people who have daycares in their home and they will have people that park there and the neighbors have had issues as well. And, and I think one thing that we've tried to maintain over the years is that public, city street parking is, is for everyone. I understand there's a difference between business and residential, but very often in our community, those lines get blurred. And we have no guarantee that parking will be available in front of our home. I, I, I park in front of my home and do I hate it if somebody's in my spot, yes, but it's, anybody can park there. And so we have to be mindful of that. Now, if they tear up your yard, then there are things that you can do to, to make sure that that is taken care of, did you, were you?
I, I had a follow-up to that.
Go ahead.
Because he's asking specifically about the, the parking pad that is gonna initially be gravel and is supposed to be made concrete in the future, um, and
Or asphalt.
Or asphalt, um, hard surface. Hard surface, sorry, hard surface in the future, I misspoke. Um, but Andrew had mentioned that there was, there was
There was a mechanism.
A mechanism, did you clarify that and I missed it or, or maybe you could clarify that for us again, Andrew, real quick, just to settle that and just to answer that question specifically.
Basically in the site plans, it was gonna be, it's gonna be afterwards.
So if, if, if the, is not done in the timeframe that is required, then the building would be posted as unoccupiable, is that, I, I'm just, I want clarification on.
I didn't think it was a definite that they were going to do, I thought it was a, if it was a problem, they would.
I- in regards to, so as part of an approved site plan, if, 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 if a, if a business or a development comes out of a compliance for a site plan, uh, there, there's two enforcement options, one is you post it for no occupancy, the other is you go down the municipal infraction route where you ask for a fine and a judge's order to comply, so you could, we choose to, enforcement could go either way.
Okay, so, so the answer then is there's two options, there's two tools, one would be a no occupancy posting, the other would be fines?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you, that was, that was, answers my question on that.
So does that answer your question, cause you were saying, what can we do?
Yeah, yeah, I was just referring to how Councilmember Harvey had gone about that and then, you know, he wanted assurance that, hey, this is gonna happen, so I'm saying the same thing. You know, hey, I'm looking at the long-term here, I'm not looking at some, hey, yeah, this is gonna happen type thing. Cause I mean, I've heard that before, you know, and fourteen vehicles Monday through Friday, all that stuff. Well, it went a different route. Well, since it did go a different route, why doesn't it have, you know, a different set of rules? Nowhere else in town is there a motor pool of thirty-plus vehicles and fifteen vehicles, you know, for employees coming in and out in a residential area, it's, there isn't. Again, I mean, is, I talked to Andrew Fangman just briefly and he had mentioned something about, you know, maybe the possibility of, you know, a residential parking permit zone or something, other cities have it. Maybe like a pilot or something where this has a trial. You know, maybe this would be a good spot to try that out at, in front of, you know, nine eleven Hancock Street. I don't, there, there's options here.
And, and I would, can I respond?
Yes.
I, I would say that i- if it becomes a problem, anything that we can do under, you know, state code, I would be open to discussing. But I, I, I wouldn't wanna preemptively do that personally. But I would, I would be more than happy to, if it becomes an issue, if the problem with the parking and the, and the getting along essentially doesn't get fixed by the, the building of this, this structure and the parking, the additional parking area, which I really think that, you know, based on what I've looked at, that, that will hopefully alleviate most of the problems that you've had. That, that I think is probably what their goal is in part, but, you know, I, I would say bring it back to us if it's, if it's an issue and, you know, I mean.
Well, it's already an issue.
Right, but I think, I think
Bring it back later.
I, what I mean is I think when they have the building constructed, they are going to have other places to park.
Okay. The next question that I would have for you, uh, the Council would be is, um, there's gonna be a lot of construction going on there, probably as soon as they get the opportunity to go ahead and, you know, do this if this is gonna pass, okay? So, that's gonna add even more and more stress on their business and my, you know, Hancock Street, so what, what, is there anything that, preparations that can be done to alleviate a lot of that stress if it does go that avenue?
That I don't.
That's something that, they'll have to discuss that with Jared and with Andrew, I mean, those are construction type tasks, I mean, ultimately they have to build. And like, we gotta give them the opportunity to build.
Well, I understand that.
And, and yeah, there's gonna be, there's gonna be semi, or there's gonna be, you know, concrete trucks, there's gonna be excavators, there's gonna be, you know, gravel trucks bringing in to set the base, there's gonna be buildings, there's gonna be framing. We have to give them the opportunity, John, to at least let them build, give them six months of operations and then come back and say, hey, now they're taking my spots again. Then we can come back and you can provide that to us, but we, we as a Council have to give him the opportunity to build, to grow, to s- to fill out the site plans that Andrew and Jim have given them and then be able to come back and review that they're still taking advantage of that. Right now, currently, you know, as a Council, we can't do anything in a sense of saying don't park there right now because they're still gonna have to build a construction, I mean, those, those are, those are parts of the, the building requirements, there's gonna probably be mud, there's gonna be issues around those types of things. Um, it's typical of, of construction, we're seeing it right now over on the, o- over on Izet right now with those, you know, those buildings of those new homes and we're having, you know, construction issues around those things we're trying to work with. But those are, I'm gonna say they're almost kinda paying, growing pains that we have to have because we wanna build those homes. And we wanna build him, we wanna build that, that way a year from now, you're like, hey, you know what? We had some issues, but we don't have those anymore now.
Right, um, I mean, I just want the Council to know and city planner and engineer that, hey, there's two streets there. There's Lake Park Boulevard, use it, use, use Hancock Street, use them both. Don't just, you know, they have already got their business running on Hancock Street. I mean, during construction or whatever, I, I hear you loud and clear.
And I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure they're gonna probably say, hey, you know what? Meanwhile, let's, let's gravel this one area so we park while we're doing this so we can continue to bring semi or, or concrete trucks. They're gonna have a construction plan, which I'm sure that's gonna allow them to still strategize how they're going to be doing their parking. They're not gonna take all their parking away and now park it, they have to build some sort of a plan into that. So like I said, give, give them the opportunity, give us that time to build a seat and then come back and tell us, hey, this is what I'm seeing and then we can have a discussion then, but we gotta give them the opportunity to build.
Okay, okay. Is, is it of the Council's opinion though that possibly in the future, you know, a permitted parking zone might be something that they would consider?
I can say that if, if there was an issue where it seemed feasible, I personally, if I'm still on the Council at that time, would entertain that, that option.
Yeah, right.
I'm not running again, so.
I mean, that's
I know. I just, you know, I have, I've had a lot of concerns about this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's been a lot going on over there and, you know, to say that, you know, they've been the best neighbors, no, but they're also running a business, I understand this, all right? Uh, but I still think there's something, you know, that can be done, you know, by the city to separate business from residential. Uh, you know, I mean, I'm not just thinking about myself here, I'm thinking about the rest of the city. I mean, and what's to stop a company like this from not just having the one company they have, they have two companies, their limo service and their non-emergency transport. What's to stop them from having a third spinoff, a fourth spinoff? Add ten or fifteen more vehicles, I mean.
Well, that would all need to come through, so it's, it's not like it's a slippery slope, we're, we're approving this part now.
Well, I mean, if, if the Council feels, you know, confident that this is gonna solve or this is the right direction to go, well, you know, vote accordingly. I mean, you guys made the decision, and gals, to, uh, you know, approve this in this neighborhood to begin with. So, you know, might as well see what you do with it.
We'll keep our eye on things and, and hopefully like Councilman Brackett said, this will make things better, having the building.
Okay.
If not, we'll, we'll still be here to talk to.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
We appreciate you coming down.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Please come on.
Do I need to say my name again?
No.
Okay. So anyway, as far as a, a barbecue thing on a, a mirror, there's no eating in our vehicles. We have cameras in our vehicles to monitor that, we hired a person to monitor the safety of our vehicles, tying people down to see if people are eating or not, there's nobody eating in our vehicles. I do know that there are kids that walk to and from, off and on the buses on the street there, perhaps, maybe that's where that comes from. Uh, we do have, we do, we will plan on parking off-site while this construction goes on to alleviate that situation.
That's good.
So I, I, I would figure we'll have to park most of the vehicles off-site. So, I mean, they, they have to have room.
On the temporary, yeah.
They have to have room to get in and out to, to do their construction and, I mean, we don't wanna block ourselves in. A- as far as parking in the yard, it's very soft. I, I have a four-wheel drive vehicle out front there that's for sale, it's my, uh, potential sta- uh, son-in-law's. And it got stuck, it's so soft out there. So in the wintertime to clear snow and that area to park, if we park out there, just even warmth from the sun, we get stuck out there every time in the snow that, a- and there's, there's nothing there, I mean, it's not up, it's not down. So I mean, we've considered everything and, and we've tried to do the best that we can, so.
Thank you. Hearing nothing else, Councilman Brackett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. We have two items following that that are related. A resolution conveying the vacated right-of-way to Ken and Dana Leroux. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution? We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. The second resolution conveys vacating the right-of-way to Eric Boots. Do I have a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Any discussion? Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. Ron Levin K, we have presented for city council's consideration a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed zoning change in the city of Muscatine. The planning and zoning committee has been requested to rezone thirty-two point seven eight acres at the southeast corner of United States sixty-one and Mittman Road from agriculture to light industrial commercial. This public hearing will be held on November seventh of twenty nineteen at seven P.M. right here in the council chambers. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread with a second by Councilman Saseo. Any discussion?
I have a question on this. Um, I don't know if it would be Andrew. And, and it's not, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I, what I'm looking for is when this comes back, and maybe it'll just already be at the public hearing when we have that. Um, but I'm curious what the, I mean, I see that in the diagram that's in the attachment where it shows some changes to the, the street there. But I wanna understand before we move this forward, um, where the expected traffic, like the expected traffic flow, are we gonna have people crossing across sixty-one to turn into this? Are they gonna be leaving, leaving Mittman Road and turning out onto, heading sixty-one south? Um, and how will that be handled? Because I've got a lot of, I've got some concern, I wouldn't say a lot, I've got some concern about the safety of that. And so I will, I will look for, at a future meeting, okay, or if you have an answer now, or a reply?
Mayor, council, so, so in regards to that, I, um, in t- in terms of the next meeting, I don't know if we'll have the technical answer, but that being a state highway, what, what they're being required to do and are currently doing is, is a traffic, traffic impact study, and that's done through the Iowa DOT where basically the, the changes in the traffic pattern are examined and the appropriate improvements are then proposed, and then that has to be approved by the state. And so, in order for them to proceed with this, they'll have to make whatever changes the state says they have to do to make that intersection flow.
Okay, perfect. And I did like the fact that trucks won't be able to turn right out of there and head down Mittman Road towards, uh, the other end. Um, based on what I read, that's correct, right?
That, that's, that's the current intent. I mean, ultimately, it's up to council to set where the truck embargo is, but that'll be what staff, staff recommends.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Hearing nothing else, Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Ron Levin L, we have presented for city council's consideration a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. The nuisance abatement costs total eleven thousand thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. The administrative fees are one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and the assessment fees are twenty-five hundred dollars. The total fees being requested for assessment at this time totals fifteen thousand one hundred and ten dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Harvey with a second by Councilman Saseo. Any discussion? Councilman Spread, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Ron Levin M, presented for city council's consideration as a resolution approving the preliminary final plat for Wilson subdivision, lots seventy-six and seventy-seven of Island View addition to the city of Muscatine. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Councilman Brackett?
Aye.
Councilman Saseo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert?
Aye.
Councilman Harvey?
Aye.
Councilman Spread?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Ron Levin N, presented for city council's consideration as a request to accept the bid price for snow removal and hauling from Bayfield Snow Removal. Bayfield Snow Removal was the only bid received, and they have kept their prices the same as they did last year. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread with a second by Councilman Harvey. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Ron Levin O, presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the installation of a three-way stop at the intersection of University and Northport Drive. Signs were installed there temporarily during the construction of Quick Star, but now the traffic committee feels that maybe they should be a permanent fixture due to the increased amount of traffic there. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Harvey. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Ron Levin P, we have presented for city council's consideration a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars to Eloca Trailer, if I'm saying that correctly, for the purchase of a transfer trailer. There's eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this purchase. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Spread. Any discussion? All in favor-
Oh, yes, your honor.
Go ahead.
Um, is this going to be, uh, made of steel or aluminum? Because I noticed that the name of the company was Eloca Aluminum.
Aluminum.
It is going to be aluminum. Are the others aluminum or are they steel?
Steel.
Are we concerned about longevity of this new trailer versus the-
You're gonna have to get up, Dave. You fought that long enough. Dave's coming to the podium.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Are we concerned?
No.
Can you elaborate?
The longevity of aluminum, aluminum? The industry, uh, for these trailers is making the transition from typically steel trailers to aluminum be- mainly because of this factor, the, the longevity, the corrosion resistance and whatnot of aluminum versus steel.
Did you get all that, Nadine?
Yes, I did. Um, isn't aluminum a lighter material than steel, though?
Um, with the construction of this, it's about five hundred pounds lighter than a steel trailer, not a whole lot.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Hearing nothing else, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Ron Levin Q, we have a request to approve the annual financial report to the state of Iowa for fiscal year ended June thirtieth of twenty nineteen. Do I have a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Spread with a second by Councilman Harvey. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. We're down to communications. Councilman Harvey, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Councilman Spread?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Malcolm?
Yes, your honor, I have a few things. One, uh, a few weeks ago, um, we asked administration and the engineers to come back with some sort of recommendation about the special needs parking in Mississippi Drive. Maybe they're really busy, but I haven't seen anything yet. And I'm still waiting to give us a response about special needs parking over there.
Okay.
Uh, two, we've talked loosely about Miller's Hill and their sliding adventure. Uh, I, I'd like to request what the previous event of this that took place and the corrective action that was provided. Can council be provided with the documentation for us to review, and then maybe we can discuss this at another time, let's, because this problem is, still persists and, I don't wanna blow past it and not address it. I think we need to, uh, look at that. And I'd like to see what the previous administration councils, uh, decided and what kinda action they took. And that way, um, we can form a plan of what we need to do about it, cause, you know, if it's a serious problem, we need to address it, you know, just for public safety and all. Uh, and that's it I have for the night, your honor.
Okay, so we have, Jim's up here to give us an answer on the ADA issue.
Just real quick, um, mayor, council, uh, those alternatives are being looked at. We do not have them yet. Um, we, we certainly haven't lit a fire underneath it because the consultant that's doing that is finishing the plans for Grandview. But we will get you something relatively quickly.
Thank you. And then-
Thank you.
You also heard the request for some more information on Miller's Hill.
Um, yeah, we will, we will get you some information on that. I'm not aware of the history on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Malcolm?
No, your honor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brockert, do you have anything tonight?
Me, yes, I do, your honor. Um, Riverbend neighbors Monday evening at seven P.M. Down at the, uh, fire station number two.
Thank you. Councilman Saseo?
Yes, I do. I, uh, I'd like to pass this out to the rest of the council members. Um, I don't know if you've seen this or not. This is a document that was presented to me, um, it was given to city employees, basically asking employees to sign this form in regards to, um, the change that we did in regards to being able to have elected officials speak with, uh, department staff. It goes on to explain that, to assist employees on this, this is going to be, and this is also headed, headed, um, the header is from Stephanie Romanale. So these are questions that I'm gonna pertain to her, seeing that she is not here and answering. And basically, what my, my question is, is do we, do we normally have prior history with having policies and procedures like this that we normally would, one, request to have all employees sign? Um, it goes on to explain, this is important as far as the retaliation policy that we, we adopted in regards to protecting our employees. But then it goes on to give guidance, is provided to be sure employees understand their rights and responsibilities. I, I'm taken back by this because I don't understand if we normally have, um, employees sign documents like this when we update ordinance or changes and, um, like this. And if we do, I'd like to know what ones, because I'm kind of confused that we normally would require employees to sign something like this.
These, these types of things are in the employee manual, and employees do sign off on the employee manual. So is, this is a change to the manual?
Okay.
It's just a separate item to be signed off on?
So, so when we have that, so then if, if we're updating the employee handbook, then we require the employees to sign?
Yes, if, if we're making more changes-
Okay.
And we're actually reprinting a whole manual, not just adding a section to it like we are right now.
So, when we adopted the policy, the very last comments were basically the, you know, elected officials shall have the access to department heads of staff, employees for the purposes of two-way communications. However, any meetings and issues and concerns raised by department heads and staff or elected officials shall be brought to attention at city administrator. I'm good with that because that's exactly what we adopted. What I'm concerned about is bullet number six at the very bottom, says employees who meet with mayor or city council members are required to report any work-related conversations, meetings, or issues to the department head, city administrator immediately. And then it goes on, my signature acknowledges this receipt of this memo. I acknowledge that receipt and understand the ordinance change and associated policy and guidelines. I never remember requesting anything in this bullet number six, nor do I ever remember seeing this coming to council. Because if I have a conversation with somebody and I ask them, hey, you know, how's that new fire truck we bought? And if they have a conversation and say, well, you know, I wish we had snow tires, or something to that effect, now I'm basically looking at something like this, and if they don't say, hey, I didn't call the city administrator, I didn't tell my department head immediately, to me, this is, this is an entrapment document. To, to try to say, well, you know, now you said something bad about me, or something to that maybe effect. I, I'm confused if this is something like that we've ever done in the past. And those are concerns for me, being that we are requiring them to sign this, and this goes to all employees, because why, why am I wanting to get unbiased feedback or communications, constructive feedback on how we can improve our city? But then we're telling our employees that if you don't tell me that you talked to any city council member, basically immediately, then you're violating this contract that we're making you sign. That's gonna be an update in the employee handbook. I am requesting that we remove bullet number six, because that was never something that was given to us to say, we want them to require. I mean, it's already saying in the ordinance. Why do I, why, why are we requesting that? And those are questions that I'd like to have addressed from Stephanie and being able to be able to give to us. Because to me, I, I, I feel this is a two-way streak in a sense. I, I, it doesn't make sense to me. Why are we, why are we making that requirement where, when the ordinance already states it? Not, the, the, the change for me is that where it requires them to say immediately. We're already asking them to do that.
Steph can, can look at that exact language in there. I, I think a lot of the time that employees aren't aware of the discussion at council level. So this is the first time they're really seeing it, and, and they need to get a sense of, of the purpose and their role in it. You know, most employees probably won't have any contact.
I, I, I understand that, but to me, it's, it's, it's very challenging for me to try to sit here and say, I, and then we can't even have a conversation with anybody until all of this is published and updated in the, in the employee handbook, which I don't ever remember us making an ordinance change requiring it to, to wait till it's all published. We already vote on it, it should be, already be done.
No, it, it doesn't have to wait till the, till the manual is updated. This is an addendum to that manual. And by signing it, they're acknowledging that this is an addendum to it. It doesn't have to wait till it's, it's actually added to the manual.
But who, who authorized then these bullets, number six? Where did that come from? Cause that didn't come from us. That's where I'm coming from. This is not something that I agree on, and if we made the, we, we as a city council own the code. We as a city council never agreed on this bullet number six. So I, I guess, yeah, if Stephanie can, can share that or enlighten us on how this came about, those, those are the questions that I have.
And, and we can definitely look at it. I do know that the city attorney did review that before it went out to employees.
So then, did, who authorized that to the city attorney to make that change? That's what I'm getting at, because that never came from us.
Okay, uh, we'll have, we'll look at it.
Go ahead.
I just, is it all right if I piggyback on that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Reading this here, this basically contradicts the code change that we made and erases the code change that we made, the way that this reads to me. And so, I feel that that is in direct conflict with the ruling that, you know, what we, the code change that we passed. And I would absolutely wanna see this removed from this document. I, I don't, I'd have to review it really closely to see if there's anything else that I would have an issue with. But that particular line item, line item six, is directly against the majority vote of the council and needs to come out.
Taking on its face value, I also inject the six.
And again, just a comment, all I'm after is constructive feedback, if there is it, or even just general conversations on how things are operational and how good things are going. You know, it is, it is our, our duty as, you know, citizens and council members to try to figure out and, and learn how we can continue to do better. How we, how we as a council can, can grow and move forward. But when I see things like this, to me, this is, this is a huge wall of communication. Issues that I, I am struggling with as a, as a council member, to figure out, how am I improving? How am I growing? How am I getting better communications with my staff? Or whoever it is, even- How am I getting better communications with my staff, or whoever it is, even from my job to where I'm doing things volunteer? I wanna be able to talk to people. I wanna be able to build those relationships, and I can't with this. It's a, it's a, it's a very difficult piece, and I don't, I don't agree with it. But if, yeah, if you could follow up on that for me.
Thank you. Councilman Malcolm?
Is it possible, if we make this, uh, an addendum item for the next meeting, where it gives staff time to, uh, collect their stuff and explain, and that way it'd be on our agenda? Everybody can see, we can openly talk about it.
If we have a consensus of four?
Yes.
Yes, sounds like we do. Okay. Councilman Saseo, did you have anything else tonight?
No, I have nothing else, your honor.
Councilman Brackett?
Um, yes, I would request that we have an agenda item added to the eleven seventeen meeting to, for the discussion, possible action to end the city administrator's contract.
Do I have a consensus? One, two, agree. Councilwoman Brockert, do you consent to add? Yes. We have a consensus to add that to the agenda for next time? Anything else, Councilman Brackett?
Nothing further.
Was that next time or the seventeenth?
Eleven, seven.
Eleven, seven.
That's the next meeting.
So, Councilman, or, I'm sorry, staff, did you have anything tonight?
Uh, nothing, your honor.
I have a few things. Um, please, reminder that we don't have any council meeting the next two Thursdays. Uh, I do have coffee with the mayor scheduled for Monday, October twenty-one, at Bickford. Also, our city guests are going to be, Chris Anderson is doing Paint the Pearl, and Amy Borgsteed with the Boy Scouts. We'll be hearing from both of them on Tuesday. The leaf schedule is out, and, uh, there's an open house at Public Safety Building from twelve to three on Sunday. If any of you have an opportunity to go down and learn of the services, take a tour of the facility, it's really nice if you haven't had an opportunity to go there. And lastly, I would just like to share that, um, I know that there are a great deal of families in our community that are in need, especially around Christmas time. This is, um, one of the weeks that Salvation Army is accepting applications for Christmas baskets for those families who need some assistance helping provide not only the holiday meal, but gifts for their children. So, this week, um, tomorrow is the last day. There will be another opening in November. They do have hours that they're open down at Salvation Army on Oregon Street, um, some hours in the morning, in the afternoon, and a few in the evening. But tomorrow, I, I would get down there tomorrow if you could. Otherwise, um, keep watching for those three dates in November. You just need to go down to Salvation Army, you don't have to have an appointment, and, uh, they will get you all fixed up, and hopefully make Christmas be brighter for your family this year. Hearing nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Or adjourn.